Good evening. Welcome to the June 23 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, the prayer and pledge will be led by Caitlin Fabre. Caitlin is an Ambassador Level Girl Scout with Troop Number 6688 in Longview, and she works part-time at Edible Art. She just graduated from high school as a home-school student and is planning to attend Kilgore College. Caitlin, please welcome, and I'm sorry if I butchered your name, sweetheart. Please rise.
The pledge of allegiance?
Prayer. Pledge is first.
No invocation is. Okay. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you all who are gathered here today. Thank you for our abundant blessings that come from living in this great country. Lord, we welcome you into the presence of the mayor, the council, and the citizens, and we ask for your wisdom to act for justice for the people they serve as they go over the agenda set before them today. Lead them to hear and do your will so that it may be fruitful and beneficial for all those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Longview. May God bless us all and guide our paths to a future that serves the common good. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Caitlin, and good luck to you in your future endeavors. We appreciate you being here. We are now at a citizen comment. I do have a few speaker cards tonight. We will start with Mike Nelson.
How's it going, everyone? Counsel, thank you for your volunteer work. Tim Temple Carpenter, thank you for representing us, District One. My name is Michael Nelson, 701, 703, 705 Stewart Street South on the border of District One and District Two, in between Loop 281 and Harrison Road. I'm a Stewart Street homeowner, proud property taxpayer and voter, speaking for my neighbors, my children, tenants, and other people in the neighborhood. This is not a police problem, this is a design problem. The city has outgrown the 1800 design, it needs to be modernized. The problem at Stewart Street is there's a lot of accidents. There's a woman that actually died, I believe, six months to a year ago at this intersection. There's constant accidents. This one just happened on Tuesday. I'm gonna play it real quick while I'm talking. This one happened on Tuesday, and these types of accidents happen all the time. At the stop sign, no one stops because of the traffic at 281 is coming too fast. Stewart Street is a blind turn, you can't see it until the last second. Stewart Street is used as a shortcut from Loop 281 to Harrison Road. The residential street has high property crimes. Kids can't play near the street due to speeders. The traffic study reports over 50K drivers on the street daily. Most of this traffic is headed to Kilgore, going off of Stewart Street headed south, taking a right, headed to Kilgore. With the expansion of Harrison Road, the drivers are promoted to use Stewart Street to avoid the traffic signal, creating more traffic on Stewart Street. With the expansion of Harrison Road, traffic piles up in the morning and afternoons headed northbound on Stewart Street, clogging up the street right in front of our driveway, preventing us from exiting in the mornings and afternoons. Eighteen-wheelers squeeze down the residential street, scraping my vehicle once and coming close to scraping a vehicle several times. Racers use the street as a racetrack. Diesel trucks keep us up at night as they slam on the gas. No protection for pedestrians, there's no crosswalk, there's no lanes marked, there's nothing out there. Some people, they get over to the left too far, and they make the people turning right have to get on the curb. All right, a quick solution. The solution I think would be great is a cul-de-sac. With a cul-de-sac, there's no traffic, life on a cul-de-sac is quiet. It's safer by having fewer cars on the road, the level of safety is increased, creating a neighborhood environment, lower crime, vandalism, increased perceived value, which has increased the property tax. It's more convenient for the highway drivers to keep going fast rather than to slow down and go through a neighborhood, they can just go around. The Institute of Transportation Engineers recommends cul-de-sacs to discourage thorough traffic. A simple barrier can turn Stewart Street into a cul-de-sac, thus making it safer for the neighborhood and the highways. Please choose safety over convenience and consider giving Stewart Street a cul-de-sac.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mike, we don't respond to citizen comment, but I want to thank you for your presentation, your concern, and your possible solution. Appreciate that very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
We'll look into this, okay?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, my friend. Next, I have Kendall Land.
Good evening. My name is Kendall Land. I live at 13 Ramblewood Drive here in Longview. I'm the pastor at First Presbyterian Church. It's in downtown Longview, across the street from the courthouse. We've been there for about 150 years, you might have missed us. And I volunteer as spiritual consigliere for One Love Longview. I'm an ordained minister of the Presbyterian Church of the United States of America, also known as PCUSA, and I would like to share with you a statement from our denomination, which you may in turn wish to share with your constituents. Celebrating the expansive embrace of the gospel of Jesus Christ and the breadth of our mission to serve a world in need, the General Assembly of the PCUSA affirms the gifts of LGBTQ+ people for ministry and celebrates their service in the church and the world. The Assembly celebrates that over the years LGBTQ+ people have faithfully, lovingly, and courageously served in every kind of service to which Christian disciples are called, notwithstanding the church's efforts to exclude them from particular types of service. The Assembly laments the ways the policies and actions of the PCUSA has caused gifted, faithful LGBTQ+ Christians to leave the Presbyterian Church so that they could find a more welcoming place to serve, as they have been gifted and called by the Spirit. At the same time, the Assembly gives thanks for the LGBTQ+ pioneers of the faith who have persisted in relationship with the Presbyterian Church at great personal cost and sacrifice, together with the whole of the LGBTQ+ community, moving the church toward a more generous, loving, and just understanding of God's grace. The Assembly also gives thanks for those who continue to seek deeper understanding and more authentic welcome even amid discomfort or uncertainty about how best to show hospitality in the spirit of continuing reformation. Today, openly LGBTQ+ people are leading churches, preaching the gospel, serving those in need, and otherwise using their gifts for ministry in the Presbyterian Church USA. With an eye toward the future, the Assembly affirms God's presence and call in the lives of all of God's people and commits to seeking justice, equality, and inclusion for all in church and society. In other words, regardless of who you love or how you identify, we love you and we welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Esposito, and I live on the 1200 block of Trailwood Lane in Longview. And I do not want to discuss the vile, threatening, dangerous words that are making me cry because they're personal, that were spoken at the last council meeting. But what I want to address is why this community is a place where those words even have a platform. My adult son is gay, he's the joy of my life. And a dear friend who is here tonight, and her son is also gay, she said something this week, and it made it clear what I wanted to say tonight. She said, "Silence is also a view." Mayor Mack, I have always supported you, I voted for you, I think highly of you, there are members of your family that I call friends and that I dearly love. And in your first election, you said something that really resonated with me. You said you wanted a Longview that your children would return to, to raise their families. And in 2015, I was a mom about to send her first child off to college, I was so behind that vision. And your children have come home, and I imagine you're overjoyed that your son is now here too. And I am so happy for you and your wife, and Longview is blessed by your children and their growing families. But I do not have that luxury. I do not know that my grandchildren will ever be just a few minutes away. Why? Because this community is not yet a place that welcomes my child. There are not the same opportunities here, there are not the same safe places, and there's still a lot of discrimination, a lot of hate, a lot of me glances. And I honestly fear even more so now that my children could be harmed here. And until those of us that are being silent, get up and stop being silent, even if our voice shakes and we have tears running down our face, if we're scared, if we lose family, friends, colleagues, we have to stand up against this hate because silence is a view. And everyone's silence right now is speaking that they agree with the word spoken at the last council meeting. And that's not what I want Longview to be about. I work really hard in this community. I'm a fifth-generation Longview citizen. This is my home, I can't imagine any other place being home. And I'm gonna keep working hard here, gonna keep speaking out, I'm gonna keep trying to change hearts and minds, because I can't leave Longview the way it is right now, it has to be better than I have found it. But I need y'all to join me, because silence is loud, so I'm asking the council, I'm asking the leaders of this city, this community, to loudly speak against those hateful words. They don't deserve a platform in this community, and those of us that are living here, there's a lot of us here representing the LGBT community tonight, and we want to feel safe, and we want a Longview that our children return to also. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. I have no more speaker cards. We will now go to Public Safety Update. Chief Moon.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. McPhee. Let's see if it'll work. Helps if you turn it on right, there you go. I do a lot better when I'm on video, right, instead of person. Wanted to first brag on a couple folks from this past Tuesday. We had a promotion, I think I have my Assistant Chief in the back, over here, Ben Kemper, he promoted to Assistant Chief. He has 20 years of service with us at Longview Police Department, very proud of him. And then also Darren Lehrer promoted to Captain to fill Assistant Chief Kemper's position, and he's got 31 years of service with us at Longview Police Department, very proud of both these guys, and I know they'll do a good job for us. Also, with continuing the Pump the Brakes, I wanted to talk about these little lights that people have been noticing around town. We have them for sure right now at Loop and Fourth Street, Loop and McCann, and Loop and Gilmer Road, and they will also be at some other intersections. And what this allows us to do is it lets the officer be on the other side of the intersection, generally where your violator is coming through the intersection, and it is wired directly to the red light. So when the light turns red, the confirmation light comes on, and then you know what color the signal is. And so that's how it works, and it's just another way to safely try to stop anybody that's running our red lights in town. So that is what it is. I know there's been some rumors about what those were, if they were cameras, or what the lights were doing and all that, but that is what it is. Also, want to give you our May results for our customer service survey, for how was the officer that you spoke with or dealt with, and we're still at a 469 out of 5. So as you can see from the scale, that's between satisfied and very satisfied. And then also with the dispatch experience that you had, a 468. So again, between the very satisfied and satisfied. On our how safe do you feel living in Longview? It's a 381. As I've told council before, this is an area that I see some improvement where we can work. But another thing about this number that still kind of impresses me is while it's very close to the 4, the safe, you have to remember, this survey is not a survey across the entire population of our city. This survey is going to people that have used our police services, that is somebody that's called in as either a reporting party or a victim of a crime, and they're still at a 381 even when they're calling in because something's happened. So I am proud of that number, and that's still a number that we'll work on, but again, when you look at it in a perspective, it's still very impressive. Also, this past weekend, we had our Juneteenth celebration and our Great Balloon Race of Texas in Longview. We had the MLK Parade, excuse me, the Parade on MLK on Saturday morning, and we actually set up a little area there with our canopy and barbecue grill going, and we had hot dogs and T-shirts, and it gave us just a great opportunity as a police department to get to visit with our community. And you can see me there even in shorts and all that good stuff, and so just always been in a uniform. And Constable Greg was there as well. And we just had a great time visiting with everybody, hanging out, and it was a real good experience. And then, of course, later that evening, we were able to sweat with everybody else out at the balloon races, and that was a good time as well. And I want to thank Longview Fire Department, Gray County Sheriff's Department, and Texas State Guard for being out there and helping us as well. And everything ran very smooth, I was very, very pleased with how all the traffic and everything else worked this weekend. And then also, we have a women's safety course coming up July 25th through 28th. That'll be on Monday night, Tuesday night, Friday night, or excuse me, Thursday night, and then we actually have a portion Saturday morning that will be out at the range, at our shooting range. And Detective Deborah Stiles, she will be the host of this, but I will be out with her at the range on Saturday morning. And if there's any ladies that have never had an opportunity to fire a gun before, we will create that opportunity for them and give them a chance to use one and see what they think about it. That is what I have for y'all, if y'all have any questions.
Any questions, Chief Moon? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Steelman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. McPhee, thank you for the opportunity to update you on a few items that the fire department has undertaken since our last council meeting. And I'm gonna talk about a couple of things, and I just want to go ahead and thank you first and foremost. You provide the Longview Fire Department with a lot of state-of-the-art, up-to-date equipment, and not only does that serve our citizens well, it serves our entire community and really our northeast Texas region well. I'm gonna cite about three different examples of that. So this example here happened back on June 10th, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department called us wanting to know if we could come help them retrieve a vehicle out of Cattle Lake. And I'm sure everybody that's been around this area long enough knows what a valuable resource that is here in northeast Texas, and something like a vehicle going in there can create all kinds of damage to the ecosystem and the fish and wildlife around there. So us getting to be a part of the solution to that problem, we're happy to reach out and help, and yeah, it's a little bit of a ways off for us, but when they call, we're always willing and we never hesitate to go help and use some of those resources that you provided us and our knowledgeable people to go out and help, you know, help complete a mission like that. So thank you first and foremost, and we're happy to be an extension of you in helping our community. Well, so that building got turned around somehow. So another example of that, fire normally doesn't burn down, it always burns up. We got to use some more of that equipment over in Kilgore early last week when they had a pretty significant fire at their Best Western. It just so happened that their ladder truck was out of service, and ours was the next closest one to be available to them, and we didn't hesitate to run over there and help them out. I think we actually ended up sending an engine crew over there and a battalion chief as well, because they had their hands full. And this is one of those ways I look at paying it forward. It's rare that we need help coming in because we have such great resources across our fire department and our city as far as public safety goes, but there are the few times a year when we tap out on those resources and being able to call someone like Kilgore to come in and help us run those additional calls or backfield force so that we maintain a continuity of service is important to me as a fire chief. So we're very happy to be able to help Chief Henderson, we're sorry for the loss they experienced over there, but fortunately, no, there were no injuries, no loss of life. We just lost a building, and they lost a building, and I'm sure it can be rebuilt. But anytime they reach out, we're gonna run over there and give them a hand. Had the opportunity earlier this week to visit with the recruit class at Kilgore College Fire Academy, class number 116. It was a fun time answering questions and just exposing them to the Longview Fire Department as a future career opportunity. They'll be graduating sometime toward the end of summer, and we hopefully put ourselves on the radar with them so that they'll give us a look. It was a great group, a lot of good questions, we had a great time with them. And again, I don't know why my things are turning, people, again, he's falling downhill. Not sure what happened there, all those were vertical when I turned them in today. Got to go help ESD number 3, which is over in the Sabine area, with a tank battery fire. We're getting these little pop-up storms late in the evening, they had one just the other day, or last night, and a lightning struck some petroleum tanks over there. So they needed some specialized equipment that they didn't immediately have as far as foam application capabilities. We didn't hesitate, we went over there and gave them a hand, again, just paying it forward and hoping that they'll be there in our dugout when the time comes. We're starting to see an uptick, I shouldn't have to tell too many people about this, it's hot outside, so we're starting to see upticks in heat-related emergencies. We just want people to know the difference between heat exhaustion and heat stroke. This slide's also running on Cities Channel 5. If you have any doubt about which one of these you might be experiencing, call 911 and let us come take a look at you and evaluate you a little bit further. This is not anything you want to play around with, so stay cool, stay hydrated as much as you can, and call us if you have a question. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Steelman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now at a consideration, any items council like pulled off for separate discussion?
Moved approved.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we get to the action items, I just want to say something real quick. I'm going to address the comments that were made earlier in items of community interest, I just can't do it during the citizen comment portion, okay? Just y'all, okay? Thank you. We're down to action items, Consider Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Submit Necessary Documents for Sabine River Authority to Receive a Grant. Mr. Archer.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. McPhee, tonight I bring for your consideration Resolution Authorizing City Managers to Designee to Present Necessary Documentation for the Application Receipt and the Expenditure of the Sabine River Authority Grant in the Amount Not to Exceed $500,000. This grant will be used at MODCOB to deal with a stormwater situation we've had for some time, and this grant really is gonna allow us to get that done. We really appreciate that. Sabine River Authority is committed to this project, so much so that many of their members are here tonight, and would like to go ahead and present that grant after approval of this item. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. Archer?
Move for approval.
We have a motion, the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have, Mr. Montane and Mr. Todd like to come up, is that who's gonna present it for us? Whoever's coming up? All of you, come on.
Yeah.
As many as it takes to carry that check, come on.
Yeah, we got, there are three board members, Cliff Todd, Elton Brock, and Darren Rudy Rudolph?
Rudolph?
Yep. And David Montane, Travis Williams, and Troy Hendry with the districts.
Come on up, gentlemen. Come on up, everybody come up here. This is such a wonderful thing, and we are so grateful to the Sabine River Authority, who's always trying to look out for us and our interests, and we appreciate the work that y'all do and the effort that y'all put in, and obviously, we appreciate this donation for us to be able to take care of some problems we're having over at MODCOB, and we really appreciate the time and effort that goes into all this. Thank y'all guys very much, y'all are awesome. Thank you all.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all, appreciate y'all. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh-huh. Let's grab a picture. Anytime someone wants to come and present checks like this to us, y'all feel free to come on up. You don't even have to be on the agenda, we will make an agenda exception for you. Thank y'all, appreciate you very much. Would not Consider Resolution Awarding Contract to the Director of City Manager for Documents for Called and A Consulting Company in Colleen, Texas? Mr. Archer?
Yes, Mayor, this is the actual award of that contract for the MODCOB work that we just talked about. So we received two bids, they're the low bid, and so we'd like to go ahead and award with those, and city staff and consultant agree, so with that, I'll-
Any questions, Mr. Archer?
Any questions?
There a motion?
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Consider Resolution Authorizing Agreement Regarding City of Longview Pension Obligation Bonds and the Longview Fireman's Relief and Retirement Fund. Mr. McPhee?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. City Council, if you will recall, we brought forward to the voters the pension obligation bonds which were approved prior to us delivering any monies to the Longview Fireman Relief Fire Fund. We have to actually have an agreement in place to do that. As part of the agreement, the conditions that the pension board came forward with and the restrictions that they were going to put into place to prevent them from expanding the benefits until the fund reached certain levels of performance are included in this agreement, and they are the three things that they went over. I would like to thank, I know the fire pension board, a couple of guys are here with that as well as Ms. Cohen, they approved this this morning, I believe, and so I bring it forward for your consideration in advance of the pension bond item.
Any questions of Mr. McPhee on this?
Yes. I never received Exhibit A. Section 3, Exhibit A on this. What is Exhibit A on this? On page 53?
The agreement?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So that's what you just explained to us, was the agreement, that's Exhibit A?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I never received a copy of it today or yesterday when I asked for it, so anyway, okay.
Any other questions of Mr. McPhee on this item?
Is this the one that Anderson sent today?
Yes.
If there's another question, is there a motion?
So move.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, Consider Resolution Authorizing the Matters Included for General Obligation Pension Bond.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm John Martin with Hilltop Security, my partner Michael Martin is with me tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and have a good report for you. We've passed out booklets here at your place settings, we are not gonna go over that page by page.
That's why we hire you, John, to not go over it with a page by page.
But there is some good information that we would encourage you to review on your free time, to review. I would like to point out that behind tab 2 is the rating reports from S&amp;P Global and from Fitch Ratings, and they have affirmed and assigned your AA rating again, which is fantastic. You're taking on more debt, more than a significant amount of debt, 46 million bucks, and you've got an agreement, part of that being repaid from the payroll deductions from the fire pension, firefighters. And this goes through, all this, and I will tell you that your staff did a phenomenal job in terms of representing the city before the rating agencies. These were not easy calls. They were very, they were very particular in terms of what we were doing. We struggled really a bit with them, and we were trying to get more credit for taking action to try to solve this issue, and instead, they were like, "Well, you haven't solved it completely." And so we didn't, we were able to get some kudos really from that, and so they talk a little bit about this in the report, but on the positive note, they go through quite a bit and talk about the stability- quite a bit and talk about the stability of the city's finances, the stability of the community and the socio and economic here that, so that alleviated any of the concerns really, and offset a lot of the concerns from the fire pension side. So as you know, we've been written up years and years and years in our rating report from, from the rating agencies for the deficit and the Fireman's Pension Fund, so I did wanna point that out. Behind tab 4, behind tab 3, let me just point to that, that is from the offering this morning. This is a little different type of obligation in another way, in that it is a taxable security, so it's not like when we do tax, tax exempt bonds for city, for, for streets and public facilities, fire stations, and, and even water and sewer projects. This is different because it's taxable, we're taking money and we're buying investments with it, and you can't use tax exempt bonds for that, so that's why this had to be at a taxable level. Taxable interest rates, the tax, the rates set on taxable bonds are indexed to U.S. Treasury obligations. So we were very fortunate today when we got into the office and started to market this and talked to Ms. Cohen, that the treasury market rallied today. So we saw a great, we had, saw a pretty good downturn, the market's been extremely volatile, and if I could show you the last page of that section, you can see how the U.S. Treasury notes and bonds have done over the last six months, no surprise, it goes like this. So, and it's, it's pretty volatile, it's, it's up and down and in a continued upward way, so there are, there's lots of movement day to day, and, you know, where she stops, nobody knows. So it's really hard to get a handle. So the underwriter, the lead underwriter, Piper Jaffray, and your co-managers, Strata and Hosa and Frost Bank, did a phenomenal job in marketing the bonds, they had really a good, a good diverse group of orders, we watched the order flow come in, so they did really an awesome job. Behind tab 4 is really the, the primary thing I'd like to focus our attention on tonight, and the first page here shows you the sources and uses of funds, and this shows you the $45,600,000 in bonds that are going to be issued, and how that is then going to be used. So about 45.1 million will be deposited with the pension fund, and then the rest will be used to pay cost of issuance. There are standard cost of issuance from service providers such as our firm, McCall Parkhurst, the law firm, the Attorney General's Office, the rating agencies, those are significant fees these days, about $60,000 is just in the rating agency fees alone. And then the underwriters discount, that's a fancy word for really the sales commission for the underwriters to sell those bonds. Behind the next page, a sideways page there, or landscape if you will, shows you the, from left to right, the existing debt service payments by fiscal year, and then when we add the POB bonds on top of that with the net levy. So the structure we're trying to do is to get to a level payment, so it's a lot easier to budget for in the, in the finance office with Ms. Cohen. So we, we get downed and we're hoping to have a very minimal impact on the overall INS tax rate, and hopefully with values going up, we have overestimated what we're showing there, so I feel pretty good about that. The next sheet shows you our budgeted cost of issuance. Behind tab 5 is a, is a copy of the offering document that was used by the underwriters to sell the bonds. That's all we really have to report tonight, if you, after you finish, if you have any questions for us, we're happy to answer those. Behind tab 6 is a suggested form of motion for you, not to put words in anybody's mouth, sometimes it's helpful to have them in front of you.
John, I mean, thank you for all your help and all the way, the way you always come up with these things and help us to get this thing going, because we appreciate this, because it's something we have to do. And so, council, any questions, Mr. Martin?
It's the lower interest rates than ours.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good.
It could've been a lot worse a few days ago.
If not, is there a motion?
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale and issuance of the city of Longview, Texas, general obligation pension bonds taxable series 2022, and approving all matters incident thereto.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're down to a discussion item concerned along the amphitheater presentation. Council, I entrust that you all had your questions submitted and your questions answered, and if there are any questions of those answers, now would be a good time to relay that information. I know Mr. Leslie and Steve Powers are here, if, if we need them to answer any questions or need to clarify anything, so I would like to open this up for discussion. Well, that was quick and easy, okay, we're done, no, okay. Anybody?
I still have some concern over the agreement as it relates between the city of Longview and the developers and the operators, Mr. Leslie specifically for you. If there are gonna be funds borrowed on this piece of property, how can we take title in the city's name?
That's gonna be more of a legal issue, we've done it before, where we've had it dealt with in the development agreement between us and the owner, so either way, we'll go either way however the attorney wants to structure it.
What about the lenders?
The lenders are okay with it.
Either way?
Yep.
Okay. And the, not to be a naysayer, but just as one of the points that I had raised, if you or your investment group decides after a certain period of time that you do not want, that Wolverine does not want the Longview Amphitheater, will there be language that we as a council can, will be able to approve who the new operator is? Or how does that structure, see, this is a lot, there's a lot of things on these that we're not here sure about.
Yeah, so there, there's two parts here, one is creating the, the structure, and then the second is operating the structure. So if we decide to walk before we get the CO, we got a problem because we're personally guaranteed to the lender, so that's a big check we gotta write.
Right.
If it gets to the operator, in the agreement itself, there will be, if you wanna have approval rights on anybody that takes over, you can do that. We've done that before, where we've had a deal, we actually stepped in and we had to go in front of the council to get approval from the council before that developer could turn it over to us. So the council had, had really a chance to take a kiss at the application here and make sure it was the right developer that they wanted, or the right operator that they wanted in the, going forward.
Excuse me, wouldn't that be obvious since we'll own the amphitheater? We would have to approve the new operator, correct? You wouldn't have flexibility.
You'll have rights to terminate the operator. You'll have certain rights with cause, different rights without cause. So you're gonna have certain obligations if you terminate without cause.
Well, sure.
Versus with cause. In both instances, you'll have the ability to pick the new operator.
Correct.
Going forward.
Because we'll own the amphitheater.
Yeah, because you'll own the amphitheater.
Thank you.
But if you try to terminate us without cause, it's gonna have more of a penalty than if, to with cause.
Right.
You provided in writing to us some answers today, so thank you, that was helpful as well, but then if you don't mind, I'll kinda summarize what I think I understand, because some of that has not been publicly shared necessarily. So, and I'd also, my question at the end of that is, what do you need from us then to continue exploring? Because I currently understand essentially the ask, I guess, is that y'all would put together a group of investors, build a 30 to 35 million dollar amphitheater on the proposed site that we're talking about, from the city, you would require a 12 million dollar cash contribution, that would be the end of our contributions, and you would raise the other funds in public or private investments in some way, that's y'all's job to figure out, not ours. And then from your side, there would be a set amount of years that you would operate it, a minimum probably of 10, but could be longer, during which you would have all profit and loss associated with it, and it wouldn't be the city, but we would own the underlying property. Does that all sound accurate?
It's all accurate.
And you'd also have all the maintenance and operation costs, we still have none of that. We have no maintenance and operation costs whatsoever.
Well, until the end of the term, whatever that is.
How long is the length of the term?
Well, that would be-
We hadn't gotten that.
Relate to city staff, I mean, it'd be a minimum 10, ideally 30, somewhere between that, 10 to 30.
But kinda based on your funding model, right? So like what you'd need to make up what you put into the project, so in your mind, longer is actually-
Better.
Potentially, right, better and more possible. Because from my mind, I don't want it to be a year term, and then every year we're looking for somebody else, so longer seems better.
It's better for us too, the longer it is, because that's a guarantee that you're gonna be there operating, and we don't have to have any maintenance and operation costs of it whatsoever.
That's correct.
That's the whole object behind this, is for us to have no liability and no maintenance and no operation and no fiduciary responsibility after we put in our initial investment, but we'll still own the amphitheater.
But to answer your first question, we're at the point now where, if, if we could have an opportunity to sit down with city staff and negotiate documents, it's gonna have to come back to you anyway to get approval, but I want you to be comfortable that you know enough that we can talk to Roland and his staff and start with those documents, so then you can look at the documents.
I think, from our, from our council standpoint, I think what we need to do is we need to come up with a decision, is do we want to move forward, do we not? Because I don't think these gentlemen can move forward without our, if we're not gonna contribute to this or agree, if things go the way they say they're gonna go and everything works out the way it's supposed to work out, if we're not going to agree to put in our 12 million, probably not gonna have this happen, because it's a lot to make up. But they can't move really forward unless we agree, and if we agree, then they can continue with their funding mechanism to see if they can get the rest of this stuff done, and then, then we have the ability to come back with agreements that are ready to go and start building. But until we make a decision, I think we're, we're kind of the cog in the wheel right now. And there's nothing wrong with being the cog in the wheel, because we have to be comfortable, but once we're comfortable, then it's time for us to make a decision and move forward. And so that's what these questions are all about, and that's what this time that we've been discussing for the last number of meetings are all about, so that we can either be comfortable or uncomfortable, one way or the other. Once we make that determination, it's time for us to make a decision and let them either move forward or move on, one of the two.
And that's accurate, the one other thing I mentioned to the chamber earlier today, which some of people don't know, is that 80 to 100% of whatever's in the gate goes to the act. That's why we structured it the way we structured it. If we're getting 100% of that and paying the act some fixed, some might be different, but they take everything from ticket sales, 80 to 100%, and so we gotta make it work from parking revenue and whatever you do in the bars and that type of stuff. So that, that's just the way the structure works.
Sure.
So exactly how does this work? We build a thing, where does the city start making their money at, other than the investments that go on around it? What, do we get anything from you?
You know what, the, the way we structured is, you gotta look to the 212 million dollar economic value that comes to the city and the county.
Can you, can you speak up a little bit, sir? I can't.
The, the way that we structured is, you have to look to the, in the study that was done, the feasibility study back in 2017 or so, it, it itemized a number of 212 million dollars of economic value that comes to the city of Longview and the Gray County, and that's where you gotta look for primarily most of your improvements there, you get cash from that, and then the rest of the adjoining land is, that starts to get developed, you're gonna get some more improvements primarily in the form of property tax revenue from the adjoining land around it. But we're not envisioning that we pay rent to the city.
Our, our, our income comes from property tax revenues and sales tax from the venue itself. We do not make any money off of ticket sales, parking, anything. That's, that's not, we don't, we're not taking any risk.
Right, we have to operate it.
If you want the risk, if you want the reward, you have to take all the risk, and we're not, we don't have the money to do that. So that's not part of what we're doing, we don't get any of the revenues from this other than the ripple effect that occurs from development around it, and then sales tax that we get, you know, from taxable income.
Sales tax primarily, depending on the structure, there may or may not be property tax, because the property tax may be waived because the city owns it.
Right, city owns it, no property tax on the structure itself, but anything developed around the area that we don't own will be property tax revenues coming to the city and the county.
Correct, correct.
And that's where we will gain our revenues over the years.
And there are tax on contents?
Yes.
The drivers, it's ours.
Some of that depends on the way the agreement's structured, but yes.
Well, have we, have we talked to the school district of the county about this? About if we get, if we take it in as a tax, as non-taxable, we, have we visited with them on this?
What, what, what will we visit with them about?
We're taking the tax of the value of the stuff off of them.
That hadn't even been built yet, we're putting 12 million dollars into it.
But what I'm saying is, have we visited with them? If we don't tax it, have we asked them if that's okay with them?
Well, that, that, they'll, if we own the, the property-
That's what I'm saying.
It's not taxable.
That's what I'm saying.
Just like when the school builds a school, we don't get taxes for that, they didn't ask us to build a school, they don't-
Well, that's understood, that's understood, but I mean, we're doing something a little different here, we're acting like a, we're acting like a lender and a bank, and a financial deal at the same time. Have we visited with them on how they feel about this?
I have not.
Maybe we ought to.
Well, I'm sure we could, but the point being is, if we built, we, we didn't, when we built MODCOB, I don't think we went to any entity and said, we're not gonna get any taxes on this because we own it. We own it. When they build a school, when they build a parking garage, I don't think they asked us, we're gonna be mad if we don't get any tax on that because they own it.
But we didn't own MODCOB, we didn't have any outside investments to, we own these banks.
On the parking garage that the county's fixing to do, they didn't ask us, are we gonna be upset we don't get taxes on it because they own it? That's, that's something they have to do, that's good for them, that's a project that's good for the county.
I understand that, but they're not bringing outside people in to do it, as far as investments.
I don't know what they're doing, I don't know.
No, they're not, they're gonna do it themselves.
Well, I hope they do, but-
Roland, there's a, in today's bullet points, there is a comment in here that says, "Our capital stock has 12 million contributed by the city of Longview and some additional money from Gray County." What is that?
Those, those responses were from Wolverine and Red Cat, so I would allow them. Sean, Sean Herrick compiled all of the questions that everyone had sent and, and compiled their answers, allowed them access to the documents so they could, so theirs are in red, and so I would defer to them.
So we don't, we don't know what that is, we do know that that's an entity out there that needs to be, we need to talk to at some point in time, we have not done that.
So as of right now, there is no commitment from Gray, okay?
That's correct. There's no commitment, nor have we talked to them, because we figured this is the first domino we need to get over first.
I got adequate responses to my questions, but on number 10 on Councilwoman Ishihara, if operating income expenses is not successful as anticipated and you did not agree to operate it past the initial term, what would be good faith estimate of the operating cost to be incurred by the city? And worst case scenario, it says that for some reason, the AMP is not successful, the annual cost would be between 100,000 and 200,000, do we have the money in the budget to operate that, worst case scenario if it were to not go through?
I mean, I, I think, so, and that's borne out by the original economic study that we looked at, and it separated into, we operate it versus somebody else operates it, and my initial concern with the city always operating it was, you really came at it as zero, because it required 200,000 in sponsorships be acquired, and then that's the 200,000 that the city would make, so it's basically a wash. So my concern always has been, the city operating it is not successful for us, we're not built to do that, we're just not gonna make it as successful as it needs to be, you do need to have a private partner that's doing that. But then, the question came from, you know, we subsidize MODCOB as a city, you know, benefit to our constituents, and I don't want the amphitheater to turn into that either, but we subsidize MODCOB at a much larger level, obviously you guys don't care about that, but, so yes, I think in the hot money, obviously I can't answer for the budget team, but yes, I think there are funds there.
And that's if we wanna keep operating it. If we don't have the money to operate, you don't have to do anything with it, which wouldn't be very prudent, we'd find someone else to operate it, but I don't think the city's ever gonna be in a position to operate an amphitheater, we would have to find another operator to do that, because that's not something that we do or have the expertise at doing or have the knowledge to do. And so, I think that's one of those hypotheticals that we don't, we're not going to be able to accommodate. So I, I don't see us ever operating this entity like we do MODCOB. You know, MODCOB is something we operate, because we have full-time staff out there that does that, we spend roughly a million dollars a year operate MODCOB. This is 100, 200,000, but I don't think we're going to ever be an operator of an amphitheater. I think we would have to source this out to another operator, as you were speaking of earlier, if we, if we had to do that. That's just not, not a feasible option for us.
Our, our number was assuming you did nothing and we just, you just kept the tub of weeds from rolling across the land. That's why the number is only 100 to 200, but a lot of it's gonna depend on what you decide to do.
How does this, how does this work on, how many days do you think it'll be operable? How many entertainers do you think will be there, say, in a year's time? Will it be feasible to use it six months of the year, or nine months of the year? What kind of entertainers are we going to be looking at? I know there's different tiers of entertainers, so what, what do you think of to make your predictions for this? And how much, on your other ones, how much does tickets cost, for instance?
Okay. The, I can just answer that by giving you some examples. We're involved at the, I was on the board of the company, and we, we did the Austin City Limits in the city of Austin. It's a big, it's 3,000, 3,500-seat capacity near the W Hotel, and that's booked over 300 nights a year. The tickets are all over the map, from 10 bucks to 50 bucks. They're all over. The type of talent, there's a lot of talent that goes through there that I've never heard of, but my kids have probably heard of it. And what we found is that there are certain acts that can fill up Cowboy Stadium, for example, U2, Paul McCartney, they can get 80,000 people. And there are certain acts that can fill up American Airlines Arena, like the Eagles or Fleetwood Mac. But there's a lot of acts that can't fill up those type of arenas and are looking for this side of, this size of an amphitheater. Those kind of acts are some names you've heard of and some names you haven't heard of. But we found that all those acts don't want to go to a 20,000-people arena, because they don't want to play the half-size, it makes them feel bad. Then, it just doesn't have the same energy level to it. They like this size, and they have to get out, because of the music industry has changed a lot, where in the old days you could do an album and just sit back and get mailbox money. Nowadays, in order to make some money, they got to get out and perform. And they can only perform to a 3,000 to 8,000-person venue. So, that's why I think that we've done, been so successful down in Austin. And I, we budgeted way less than that to go forward, because we don't know. We do think there's a big demand from the entertainer side. We think the location is fabulous, because it's halfway between some major markets in Dallas and Shreveport, and that this is a natural stop for a lot of the people, because there's no place to stop in between. So, we're hopeful that we'll get north of 100, but we did not budget north of 100. We budgeted more like 25 to 50.
You budgeted how much?
25 to 50 acts.
Okay, so, we're talking about a much worth of acts a year?
That's what we budgeted.
Right now, what you're budgeting for. And that's in for the 212, 212 million, 220 million that we put in the numbers here? That's what you used to think of our repayment is on our investments around town, based off of that?
That's consistent with the study. We kind of followed that study that was done. And we think we'll do better than what's in the study.
The 2017 study had 16 acts.
Yeah. So, I do believe they understated that.
And if they hit 100, imagine where our number's going to go.
Yeah.
Well, we have to ask this, or I have to ask this, because I've had a lot of people ask me this.
Yeah, that's fair.
You know, they, they, this is all, a lot of this is great to them, like it was to us at first, but they want to get down to the meat and potatoes of knowing, well, what's it going to do for us? What's it going to cost? Why are we going to, how are we going to make money out of it? You know? And that's what I'm asking these questions for, is to let those folks know, because they, they've asked me these questions, and it's a good way to get it down there.
All appropriate questions, and you may wind up having-
The financing and everything like that, yeah, I understand quite a bit of it, I understand it, and a lot of the questions were asked, but those folks want to know, "What's it going to cost for me to go to one of these? You know, where am I going to park? What's going to be out there? Who's going to be there? What kind of, you know, what kind of entertainers are going to be there?"
I get it, I get it, and totally appreciate it. We answered a bunch of questions today. I by no means expect that to be the end. You might have a few more when you go out to eat or something, and people are going to ask you other questions, and you should throw them our way. I have no problems with that. And you should ask every question you want, so that you feel comfortable with it. No problems with it at all.
Ms. Snoddy?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, guys, so much for responding to the questions. I would appeal to council that if your questions have been answered adequately, that you're okay with the responses that you got, that we collectively, you know, move forward with this. I mean, we're just still in the phase where we're kind of trying to figure things out. So, I just think, you know, we can talk about this and continue to talk about it, but we can't get to the next phase until we decide, make a decision this evening to do that.
And that's a fair point. Even if we go to the next phase, there's still a lot of room for you to ask a bunch more questions. And you're going to hear a bunch more, and you should just throw them in.
What is your next phase?
Our next phase is working with Roland and his team.
What are you going to require from the city?
Just that.
Just what?
Just that ability to work with the city staff and come up with agreements that make sense.
So, with some of the questions, the technical questions and the monetary questions you're going to get back with us on, that you didn't have answers for tonight.
For example, which one are you referring to?
A few of them were asked, and they were, they were answered, they were, said that they didn't have the information or something on them yet. I hadn't, I hadn't, I just got this at 4:30 this afternoon, I hadn't had a chance to really even look at it, because when I got in from work and cleaned up and popped this up, it just, you know, that's all I got. So, I hadn't had any chance to look at it yet, but I'm assuming that if most of my council representatives are happy with it, I don't have a, really, a big issue with it, but...
But we have no problem, as you go through it, if you have, if you need some clarity, let Sean know, he's good at letting us know right away, and we'll respond to it. We have no problem with that. And I want to totally encourage you that there's no silly question. Whatever you need to get comfortable with it, you need to send it our way, and we'll respond to it accordingly.
But I think to Nona's point, you're saying, we, at some point in time, we're going to vote, and I think that's what Steve's asking, when are we going to vote on $12 million? And you're saying you can work out some details with Roland, and then maybe that would be our next.
Oh, that's another deal, the $12 million. When is it due? I know it's due when the project's finished, but is that a year from now, a year and a half from now? Are we supposed to put this in escrow? What are we supposed to do with this, Roland?
The money would be due upon certificate of occupancy, which is about, expected to be, if we move forward in reasonable timeframe, probably spring of '24.
Okay.
Two years.
Two years.
Almost two years.
So, what, in limbo, what are we doing with the $12 million?
It's in the reserve.
It's in our reserve fund.
Okay.
It's still there. I mean, it is not moving anywhere.
We're not having to put it up for anything.
No, sir.
We don't need it. We're counting on it being in the reserve fund. You'll have an obligation to pay that two years out.
I understand that, I understand that, but, I mean, you know, we're, we're in limbo of the $12 million. If the economy goes south and we have to have, we have to start dipping into our reserve fund, we've still, other than our percentage we have to hold in there now, we've got to hold the other 12.
Right.
Okay?
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, Steve, no pressure.
I'm ready.
Give us a list of hypothetical acts.
Uh, well, the acts I showed you last time with, you know, I think we had Def Leppard, Miranda Lambert, Luke Bryan, Halsey, I'm trying to cover all range of-
Morgan Wallen.
Yeah.
Morgan Wallen.
Right.
Jonas Brothers.
I'm going off of, all those acts aren't just pulled out of a hat, those are people that have performed at a lot of the popular amphitheaters in the South, in this region. So, these are people that are driving right by. That list is growing every day.
But you really don't think, from your side, here again, speculatively, the attraction of acts that our community, the 300-plus thousand people in that study, would want to see are out there?
I, I'm speaking from-
We've done this for a long time, so I mean-
With talking to booking agents, they're excited. I had someone call me about three weeks ago that was driving right by the property site, saying, "There's money we're missing out on, hurry up." You know, I mean, these guys are, they're ready. It's not just a fact, and I was talking about this before today, it's not just the fact it's a new facility. A lot of these guys, they don't care it's a new facility, they care it's a new market, they care it's a new place. And how we get them coming back is hospitality, showing them a good time, a good ingress/egress coming off I-20 for their staff, because when the staff is saying, "Hey, guys, that Longview show was great," you know, that's what we want. We want to build the positive experience, and I'm not concerned with that at all, and agents I've spoken to are not concerned at all.
I also talked, the other thing I mentioned to the chamber earlier is that there's two functions here. One is, is there the demand, which you're talking about? Our private partners are putting up some money, because they think there is a demand. So, we think that that is good, and that we'll get a decent return for the investment that we're going to make. From the city's perspective, you got to be good stewards with the money, I get that, and you got to find a good anchor for that side of town, I get that, too. And so, you look at the opportunity, options that you have available to you, I don't know what other good anchor or catalyst you can have on that side of town, I don't know it.
Does it have, like, an upside possibly of, and I'm very, very familiar with this, because I did a lot of work for your former company, but does it have an upside of becoming maybe an Addison Circle or something of that nature, where you've got a lot of mixed-use development in and around that corridor?
Well-
I mean, it's not going to be the North Atlantic all the way, you understand, but-
Yeah.
Does it tend to attract these other amphitheater sites around the country? What do they attract?
They attract primarily other retailers or entertainment-type things around there, which I think that will happen. Addison Circle has a lot of housing attached with it, as you know. I don't know if we'll have as much housing, there'll be, probably be as few, and we've discounted the fact that you could build some multifamily-type housing out there, so I'm not sure if that will happen. I don't want to mislead you at all, but I do feel pretty comfortable that other retailers will come around, based on the velocity of people that we're bringing to the site because of the amphitheater.
Mr. White?
Yeah, so, I kind of have a general comment, which is kind of somewhat related to that. You know, this area where the amphitheater is going is in District 3, and, I'm sorry? Oh, well, it's close enough, I'm claiming it. I'm claiming it. And, and, but, I'm interested in the overall development of that area as well. And this is probably not necessarily a question for you guys, but a question for us to think about, in the sense of, you know, creating and dropping an amphitheater right there along Interstate 20, but not a plan for the areas surrounding it. And, you know, I think we should all think about what, you know, Phase 1, if it's the amphitheater, what Phase 2 and 3 would look like, because we also know, and I've spoken to Mr. McPhee about this a whole lot, is that right now, in that Estes-20 area, it, there's a lot of construction that needs to be going on for there to be a high-traffic flow going in and out, into, off of 20, into whatever that development is in that area. And so, as we, as a council, move forward, and we do decide to do this, you know, I think we all have to think, not only Phase 1, which could possibly be the amphitheater, but Phase 2 and 3 with, you know, the west side of Estes, the southwest, I'm sorry, the northwest side of Estes, the access roads coming in and out. I don't know if you guys have looked at that, to see how traffic would flow in and out, because there's going to be more work that's going to need to be done there, a whole lot in that area as well. And so, we can't, you know, dropping an amphitheater in there and then not thinking about, hey, how are we going to manage this, this in there? Because right now, that's been a major holdup with us developing that area right now, is that traffic flow.
That's all fair, and some of it's going to require some involvement with TechDOT to make sure that we have the right traffic structure in place. I could see down the road where perhaps you're going to hear from other investors saying, "Hey, maybe we should put a TERS in place," or something else. That's a separate issue that you guys are going to have to deal with down the road, not with this particular issue. We think we will drive good traffic, but we do have to talk to TechDOT and make sure our engineers have the right infrastructure in place, so that we have the proper ingress and egress for that site, for any future things.
Those are great issues for us to have to worry about, is other developers wanting a TERS put in, other people wanting to come in and put developments on properties that we own down there, which we do own property, or LeadCo owns the property in that area. These are, these are the things that we've never been able to stimulate before, and that's interest in that part of town. And I think the interest is going to be over the top. It's going to change the face of that whole Estes-I-20 interface, it's going to change the face of Lakeport, it's going to change the face of East Monroe going down, it's going to change the face of Marbly, it's going to change the face of High Street, it's going to change the face of the whole community down there by the lightning strike. And that's what we have to take into account. It's not just $12 million we're putting into an amphitheater. We're making investment into our community for $12 million, it's going to pay dividends well beyond what this economic study is showing, that's just showing one little section right there. It doesn't show anything past that one little section. And so, this is what we have to be looking forward, and looking forward-thinking in how we approach this, because this will be a forever change of that part of town, not just a few years' change.
And I don't want anybody to lose sight of the fact, either, that we're making a bet that's going to be successful, financial bet, and we're limited only to the amphitheater site. Your bet goes beyond just that. So, you're going to want the amphitheater to be successful, but you want it to be successful because you've got other stuff. We don't have anything else, so we're betting that the amphitheater is going to work. We feel comfortable that the demand is there.
Yeah, and I, to raise your point, I think that's very timely, that if we are moving forward with the amphitheater, we should be looking at a TERS at the same time, so we could keep money down there to improve infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, because amphitheater, when you think about it, you know, you're going to have people coming in for a show, enjoying a show, and hopping right back on 20 and leaving, you know? And so, it should be thought of, I'm speaking to us. We should think of this as, okay, Phase 1 is the amphitheater, but what's Phase 2 and 3 that we can really assure that, one, those tax, those tax dollars are going to be here in Longview past the show, you know? And then, another thing to consider is, what, what's the employment of citizens in our area? And I want to advocate for citizens in District 3 and 2, you know, for jobs here at this amphitheater. What's the rate of employment that happens there as well? Because I'm assuming there is management, but also, you know, the employment that goes on and without it, I'm sorry, within it.
So, are you asking that question, is the rate of employment?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that, that's one of the questions, or one of the comments.
Yeah, well, I'll let you address that, the operations.
So, there'll be, there'll be a full-time staff, anywhere from eight to 10 people, you know, GM, head of operations, and other types of jobs like that, but the part-time and the other opportunities that we're going to have are tremendous. Specifically, if you remember the seasonal events I was talking about, those are going to run from, you know, ideally October all the way through December, but also, there's going to be lots of weekly events and lots of things, not just what Steve was talking about with the feasibility study. The amount of events, that was strictly just operating as a concert venue. That is not what I intend to do. I intend to have lots of events that are not just concerts. So, there's, there's going to be a lot of opportunity for jobs, for sure. That's, that's what, that's kind of what we got extended about, to be honest.
Let us defer on an actual number.
I'll support it. It's courtesy to Nona, I think she ought to make the, you know, the motion to proceed.
We can't, it's a discussion tonight only, but it's a discussion only tonight, but we, we do, yes.
She needs to say, hey, I'd like to proceed. She needs to say, hey, I'd like to proceed.
At our next meeting, I would like to take your, your prompting. And at our next meeting, we need to bring something forth that our council is going to either support or not support this, and when then we move forward. Is the council agreeable?
Yeah, could, could it be with some, I would love some just like numbers. So the city is at twelve million, the operating is at ten, whatever you and Roland could iron out a little bit that would...
Roland, I had a chance to really read this, so that would give us some time to do that. But I think Nona needs, it's her district, she needs to...
You, you read through your questions. If you have questions, get with Sean or get with Roland. They'll get them to you all. You all get with Roland. We're giving you permission to proceed to get with them. Okay, Jim?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, this...
They're just going to discuss.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they'll come back to us with something that we can actually bring forth as an action item in our next meeting.
One of the things, if we, if we do want to go take action in, in the future, I think that it would behoove us. I, I can tell you how many deals like this I've negotiated. And, 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 and so the other thing that I can tell you is that Mr. Finley and Mr. Robert Ray have not done these kinds of deals. We have had conversations with folks in other communities, obviously doing research. But I think if council wishes to do that, we might should think about proceeding with doing some kind of request for qualifications to get an expert matter, a matter expert that is, that does these type of agreements. Ms. Snoddy, I believe you even referenced it in your questions. So we would obviously go out with a request for qualifications for a proposal from an attorney that's a subject matter expert, and then bring that to you to say, hey, allow us to get this guy on board to help us kind of outline those agreements for you guys to consider. That, that would be the next step, I think, from the city's perspective.
Good with you guys?
That's fine with us. And, and we're not looking for an absolute commitment. We're just looking for a contingent commitment to go to the next step.
Commitment will always be contingent upon, because we have to see where you go past us. We've got to make sure what you do past us is still good with us, too. So everything will be contingent, but I think that's where we need to proceed.
And that's fine. And then whatever you need, you let us know.
Yes, sir.
We'll get it in there.
And I want to thank you guys for being so, so amenable to come in here and discuss with us. I know you guys are busy. You guys have more stuff going on than we can all put together. But we thank you for your commitment to this and your ability to talk with us so openly and so honestly, and allow us to talk to you in the same manner. And we appreciate that very much.
And one other thing I'll ask is, since we're going to be here a lot, I, I need a list of the top three to five restaurants.
We'll get them for you.
Okay.
One thing.
Okay, Mr. McPhee?
So, so thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. We've received questions from council members beginning middle of last week, all the way up until yesterday. And so I want to let council know that we worked the turnaround with coordinating with them, and, and Sean Harris' efforts should go, not go unnoticed, because we spent the first three or four hours trying to finalize those questions, add to the questions, and get the responses from Mr. Leslie and Mr. Powers. So they have done a lion's share of work, and we have done a lion's share of work to try and get this information to you as quickly as possible. But I just wanted to thank you guys, as well as Sean Harris, for that, for that. It was not an easy effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
And as you have more questions, feel free to send them our way.
We will.
We have no problem with that.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate you all. We're now out of the community interest. Mr. Carpenter?
I've got two real short ones. The Cleet Food Bank with Gregdiner is still continuing, first and third Thursday. It'll be coming up again. The last thing is, we've got a Greg County cleanup coming up this Saturday, in fact. Precinct One, Three, and Four. We don't have a barn in Precinct Two anymore, so if you have opportunity, I'd invite you to take care of that. No electronics, no paint, no flammables, but that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Snoddy?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to kind of let you guys know, as the, the pictures are being shown, I have a whole lot of people I'd like to thank for a great Juneteenth weekend, starting with Spider Pig from the Hot Air Balloons that was out there early that morning, blowing up their hot air balloon. There were probably anywhere between sixty people or more taking pictures out there. It was a, it was a fun time. From the staging area with the parade, that was a real big to-do. I've never been on that end of it. So it was pretty exciting to be out there and try and get people lined up for the parade. And then on to the activities that were in both the Stafford Antique Park. Big thanks for the, to the organizers of the events and the donors, to city staff, public works, parks and sanitation. I have to write all this down, guys. I'm old. Volunteers, Teens from Saturday Initiative, Class of Seventy-Eight showed up in big numbers, and we, they worked their butts off. And I do appreciate you guys so very much and all the volunteers that were there. Dwayne, John, and Blind, special thanks to those guys. They made sure that I was pampered and taken care of, and I appreciate them so very much. Again, Spider Pig for representing Great Texas Balloon Race. The parade participants, oh my God, they were awesome. I didn't even realize that we had an entire Jeep club here in, in Longview. I do want a Jeep now. They showed up in big numbers, and we were pretty excited about that. The community, we do this because of you and wouldn't be able to do it without you. So big shout out to the community, to all the vendors that were there, to the grand marshals of the parade, to Longview Police Department, Chief Boone, his staff and his family that were out there serving hot dogs, to the fire department for starting off the parade. And we did start on time. They made sure that everybody stayed safe. To LPD and Sheriff Department that provided security on that day, to the people who worked behind the scene. But the real MVPs were the community. The community showed up. Everybody had a great time. It was just a, an awesome weekend. So it was an experience that I will carry on forever. So thank you guys for everything.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Yes. I want to thank everyone for a wonderful Juneteenth weekend as well. It was the first time that we've celebrated as a nation, as a national holiday. And everyone that came out participated, I want to thank them well for being out. One event was the Jazz Night. It was a great night. I got information from that and was there to attend that. It was a good night. And I also passed that. I want to welcome everyone from the Pride community here, and thank you for speaking tonight. And I do see you, and I do acknowledge you, and you are loved, and you are welcomed.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ishihara?
Nothing. I guess I would just say the same. Thank you, Carrie and Kendall, for speaking. Appreciate you all being here.
Ms. Cambova?
I have a couple of things, and I'd also like to acknowledge you guys who came and spoke, and hate has no place in our community. And so we love everybody, and we're thankful that you're willing to come and give your testimony. I know it's not easy. There are a couple of things. School supply train, this applies to every district, all community members. Saturday, August sixth, eight AM to two PM. Pre-registration is required. It will be going through Buckner. We, we will be offering backpacks with school supplies, a pair of shoes and a uniform. So if you have any questions in regards to receiving these items, please reach out to Buckner. And the next one is reminding everyone in the community, no matter, no matter where you're located, that Longview Community Ministries does have formula as well as essentials such as food, non-perishable items, utility help, and other things. Thank you so much.
Ms. Burtle?
Nothing for me.
Mr. McPhee?
Nothing.
Well, Freedom and Fireworks Celebration makes plans to join us July fourth for our fireworks and freedom celebration. Gates open to Longview Convention Complex at four PM. The invite includes a live concert and the biggest fireworks show in east Texas. And I'm telling you, it is the place to be on July the fourth. It is a great place for family. You'll see thousands of people out there and enjoy a great fireworks show. July fourth holiday, city offices will be closed on the July fourth holiday. On Monday, July fourth, sanitation and recycle collection will run on a regular schedule on Monday and throughout the week. Art Walk will return to downtown Longview on Thursday, July the seventh. Don't miss this great evening of art, music, food, and community. That's another awesome thing we have in our community. So I would like to take just a moment to address the concerns, valid concerns of those who have come and spoken this evening and those that I've spoken with the last two weeks since our last meeting. I would like to first clarify so that you all know how rules and regulations work up here as a council and what we are able and not able to do. Okay? So I just want you to understand those things first. Citizen comment period of a city council meeting is a limited public forum.